Today at our town hall, welcome to our town hall on the American Rescue Plan Act funding for Daly City. Many of you have joined us to hear about the presentation that our staff will provide. And also, the main reason is also to hear from all of you. I look forward to your comments and feedback from our community members that will be joining us. We want to hear from you, our residents, our small businesses, and community members. We want to hear from you so that we can allocate funding where it's needed the most. After our town hall, staff will be beginning to finalize a comprehensive local recovery plan to guide our spending on these federal dollars over the next few years. And if you were not able to attend tonight's town hall, please continue to write us on your feedback. We appreciate the correspondence received so far and look forward to hearing from you. With that, I will pass it over to staff to begin the presentation. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. My name is Stephen Stolti. I'm the Assistant City Manager, and we are going to get the slides up on the screen in just a second. So bear with us. Okay, great. So we can just go to slide two. Perfect. So first, I would really like to thank city departments, including finance, economic and community development, public works, and water and wastewater resources for collaborating and working so hard to form a set of recommendations for your consideration today. Let's take a quick look at the agenda for tonight. We will discuss an overview of the American Rescue Plan Act. We'll discuss eligible uses of those funds according to federal spending criteria. Then we'll move into the formation of our local recovery plan. This is the section of tonight that features all of the different staff recommendations for funding. And then we'll take a pause there and have a discussion with city council members. We'll ask for feedback at that time. And then we can open the town hall up for community input. And then after that, we'll discuss next steps. Okay, so the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 was signed into law on March 11th of this year by President Biden. It is a historic $1.9 trillion economic stimulus bill. It's one of the largest in U.S. history. And as a side note, you're going to hear staff use the acronym ARPA tonight to refer to the American Rescue Plan Act. There are many provisions of this legislation. It includes economic impact payments. You may have heard about those $1,400 payments to income-eligible households. There's a child tax credit, a capital projects fund, a homeowner assistance fund, emergency rental assistance, which has gained a lot of attention in our area, state small business credit initiative, employee retention credit and paid leave credit programs, and unemployment compensation. Tonight, we will be focusing solely on the state and local fiscal recovery funds, which are dispersed directly to local jurisdictions. So let's take a look at the funding totals for Daly City and our spending timeline. Daly City is set to receive approximately $25 million. We received half of this amount, just over $12 million in June, and we will receive the remaining half in June 2022. Expenditures from March of this year through the end of 2024 are eligible, and we have to spend all of the funds by the end of 2026. Now, I am going to pass it over to Abby Visser. She is the new Deputy Director of Finance and Administrative Services, so a big welcome to Abby. And she's going to talk about eligible uses of funding next.
Okay. Great. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. As you mentioned, I'm just going to briefly summarize some of the eligible uses. The federal government has been releasing the guidelines and rules for how we spend these program funds, and we just kind of want to go over them. You did see these bullet points at the May 24 budget study session, or budget session as well. So they should look familiar. The first main category is general fund revenue losses due to the pandemic. So we have an opportunity to replace revenues that we lost from the general fund using these ARPA funds. Another big category is infrastructure projects that are related to water, sewer, or broadband projects. So that's another opportunity there for ARPA. And then the third kind of big category encompasses a lot of things. Assistance to households could be nonprofits, could be small businesses. And this is the really category that's designed to respond to the negative economic impacts of COVID-19. All the recommendations we're going to be looking at tonight fall within one of these three categories.
So for anyone watching tonight or joining us by Zoom, the mayor and the city council are interested in creating a local recovery plan for this federal funding. And we will be seeking council feedback and community input on a variety of projects and programs that we will present next, all of which are designed to boost our recovery from the pandemic and the recession. Over the last few months, our staff aligned recommendations for ARP funding with known community needs and federal spending criteria. So Abby and I are going to go back and forth through this next section, but I'll kick it over to her to discuss the first recommendation.
So the first thing was the first category I showed on the last slide, and it is the idea of replacing general fund revenue losses with ARPA money. This has actually been introduced before because we did talk about this at the May 24 city council meeting. But just to talk a little bit about the eligibility here, the idea is that the federal government understands that a lot of municipalities lost money during this time period. And in order to kind of maintain existing service levels, we're able to use some of these revenues from ARPA to just backfill those lost revenues. They gave us four calendar years that we could do that through. That's 2020 to 2023. Right now, the city has done an estimate kind of on our lost revenues for the two calendar years, 2020 and 2021. And we've estimated 11.7 in 2020 and 12 in 2021. This is using the current guidelines that we've been given by the federal government, but they are currently taking comment on that, and it may be revising as we go through this process. But right now, this is a pretty significant revenue loss we're looking at in just these two years.
Today at our town hall, welcome to our town hall on the American Rescue Plan Act funding for Daily City. Many of you have joined us to hear about the presentation that our staff will provide. And also, the main reason is also to hear from all of you. I look forward to your comments and feedback from our community members that will be joining us. We want to hear from you, our residents, our small businesses, and community members. We want to hear from you so that we can allocate funding where it's needed the most. After our town hall, staff will be beginning to finalize a comprehensive local recovery plan to guide our spending on these federal dollars over the next few years. And if you were not able to attend tonight's town hall, please continue to write us on your feedback. We appreciate the correspondence received so far and look forward to hearing from you. With that, I will pass it over to staff to begin the presentation. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. My name is Stephen Stolti. I'm the Assistant City Manager, and we are going to get the slides up on the screen in just a second. So bear with us. Okay, great. So we can just go to slide two. Perfect. So first, I would really like to thank city departments, including finance, economic and community development, Public Works, and Water and Wastewater Resources for collaborating and working so hard to form a set of recommendations for your consideration today. Let's take a quick look at the agenda for tonight. We will discuss an overview of the American Rescue Plan Act. We'll discuss eligible uses of those funds according to federal spending criteria. Then we'll move into the formation of our local recovery plan. This is the section of tonight that features all of the different staff recommendations for funding. And then we'll take a pause there and have a discussion with city council members. We'll ask for feedback at that time. And then we can open the town hall up for community input. And then after that, we'll discuss next steps. Okay, so the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 was signed into law on March 11th of this year by President Biden. It is a historic $1.9 trillion economic stimulus bill. It's one of the largest in U.S. history. And as a side note, you're going to hear staff use the acronym ARPA tonight to refer to the American Rescue Plan Act. There are many provisions of this legislation. It includes economic impact payments. You may have heard about those $1,400 payments to income-eligible households. There's a child tax credit, a capital projects fund, a homeowner assistance fund, emergency rental assistance, which has gained a lot of attention in our area, state small business credit initiative, employee retention credit and paid leave credit programs, and unemployment compensation. Tonight, we will be focusing solely on the state and local fiscal recovery funds, which are dispersed directly to local jurisdictions. So let's take a look at the funding totals for Daily City and our spending timeline. Daily City is set to receive approximately $25 million. We received half of this amount, just over 12 million, in June, and we will receive the remaining half in June 2022. Expenditures from March of this year through the end of 2024 are eligible, and we have to spend all of the funds by the end of 2026. Now I am going to pass it over to Abby Visser. She is the new Deputy Director of Finance and Administrative Services, so a big welcome to Abby. And she's going to talk about eligible uses of funding next.
Okay. Great. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. As you mentioned, I'm just going to briefly summarize some of the eligible uses. Federal government has been releasing the guidelines and rules for how we spend these program funds, and we just kind of want to go over them. You did see these bullet points at the May 24 budget study session, or budget session as well. So they should look familiar. The first main category is general fund revenue losses due to the pandemic. So we have an opportunity to replace revenues that we lost from the general fund using these ARPA funds. Another big category is infrastructure projects that are related to water, sewer, or broadband projects. So that's another opportunity there for ARPA. And then the third kind of big category encompasses a lot of things. Assistance to households could be nonprofits, could be small businesses. And this is the really category that's designed to respond to the negative economic impacts of COVID-19. All the recommendations we're going to be looking at tonight fall within one of these three categories.
So for anyone watching tonight or joining us by Zoom, the mayor and the city council are interested in creating a local recovery plan for this federal funding. And we will be seeking council feedback and community input on a variety of projects and programs that we will present next, all of which are designed to boost our recovery from the pandemic and the recession. Over the last few months, our staff aligned recommendations for ARP funding with known community needs and federal spending criteria. So Abby and I are going to go back and forth through this next section, but I'll kick it over to her to discuss the first recommendation.
So the first thing was the first category I showed on the last slide. And it is the idea of replacing general fund revenue losses with ARPA money. This has actually been introduced before because we did talk about this at the May 24 city council meeting. But just to talk a little bit about the eligibility here. The idea is that the federal government understands that a lot of municipalities lost money during this time period. And in order to kind of maintain existing service levels, we're able to use some of these revenues from ARPA to just backfill those lost revenues. They gave us four calendar years that we could do that through. That's 2020 to 2023. Right now, the city has done an estimate kind of on our lost revenues for the two calendar years, 2020 and 2021. And we've estimated 11.7 in 2020 and 12 in 2021. This is using the current guidelines that we've been given by the federal government, but they are currently taking comment on that, and it may be revising as we go through this process. But right now, this is a pretty significant revenue loss we're looking at in just these two years. And we do expect that there's additional revenue loss. In the next two years, they'll be constantly monitoring when we see those revenues coming back. Given this loss, staff had brought at the May 24 budget and adoption presentation, the $10 million for each of the fiscal years, that's in 2021 and 2022, to backfill lost revenue and maintain service levels. This doesn't cover all the revenue loss, but it makes a big help. And then the next slide, I'm going to kind of show that you should illustrate for you kind of what you saw in the budget meeting. So on this slide, we've brought forward kind of two charts that we showed again in the past. The one on the left-hand side is the $10 million in ARPA funds added into the chart. So for fiscal year 2021, you see about $105 million in revenue. And for 2022, you see the 110. By putting that 10 million of ARPA into our general fund budget, we're able to have what we estimate is a surplus in 2021, a deficit in 2022. But we're still able to keep six months of operating reserves available. Given that our reserve policy target is six months of operating funds, this is why we were bringing this to you in the budget session. If you look in the other column where no ARPA funds were given to revenue loss, then we have $100 million revenue in 2022. That brings us to a much larger deficit in 2022 and brings us much closer to 3.5 months of operating reserves, which is a really tight target and doesn't give us a lot of space. That is why when we brought forward the budget, we recommended 10 million in 2021 and 2022. That gives us time to kind of figure out where our revenues are. You know, we do anticipate there probably will be deficits potentially in 2023, but this ARPA really kind of floats a little bit, prevents service cuts, allows us to figure out where revenues are and develop a true long-term sustainability plan for the budget going forward. We're really fortunate that we do have the ARPA because it does, again, keep us from having to do immediate service cuts or like we might have done following the Great Recession. So, let's see. And I did want to add too that there are other cities that are looking at using a chunk, a good chunk of their ARPA's for this very purpose because the general fund revenue losses have been so intense.
Ms. Vessar, I think that my colleague, Councilmember Bonaventura, has a question.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, Ms. Vessar, could you tell me again or walk me through the what the best practice is in terms of how many months reserves, again, we as Daily City should be maintaining?
Right. So our general fund reserve policy target right now is six months of operating funds. So that is closer to that $55 million general fund reserve that you see us ending with in fiscal year 2022 in the column kind of on the right hand, left-hand side, where there's $10 million of ARPA funds. So that's a healthy six months. That's our really good target. The minimum that we want to go to is three months. And so that's what we're getting close to without the ARPA funds. Does that help answer that question?
Yes, got it. Thank you.
And if that sounds, so that's kind of our first recommendation and kind of what we put in the budget was that that 10 million would be in both 2021 and 2022. So I'm going to move on now to our second recommendation. So the next one, we're talking about critical capital improvement projects. And this is the same technical eligibility category. We're using some of our revenue loss to put towards capital projects because the federal guidelines allow us to do infrastructure projects that are from the general fund because the assumption is during the pandemic, we lost revenues. We didn't have time to do those kind of deferred maintenance projects that the general fund would normally pay for. So in working with public work staff, we looked at some of what the high priority projects were. And you can see in here that we came up with two specific deferred maintenance projects. They're both HVAC projects that are essential to the operation of two or our most public-facing facilities, City Hall and Civic Center North, which of course houses the city's community service center, the youth health center, and the county's behavioral health and recovery services. At these facilities, the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, or HVAC units, have reached the end of their useful life. And as we all kind of learned during the pandemic, reliable air circulation and ventilation are very important to human health. So the nice thing about this is we have a backlog of capital improvement projects from the Great Recession that we haven't been able to address. This is a high priority. This helps bring our major civic facilities up to kind of higher-level ventilation standards, which will kind of help us if this pandemic keeps going. And it gives us an opportunity to kind of accomplish these projects. The third capital project on this list, I'm going to let Stephen talk to.
Hey, thanks, Abby. So over the past few months, city staff have been working with our community service center and Second Harvest Food Bank to plan for future food need, even after society has fully reopened. Both organizations have identified ongoing need in Daily City for emergency food distribution. And their community service center is currently providing food distributions four days a week. And they did partner directly with Second Harvest during the pandemic. Right now, there is a temporary cold storage unit stationed in the parking lot at Civic Center North. You may have seen it. But it is not safe and it is not a long-term solution. And tenants in the other areas of the building will soon return to in-person operations this year. Right now, also, many city departments are involved with space planning for the first floor of Civic Center North, which is where the community service center is. That space, it really needs to be organized and better utilized. So we've been taking a holistic look at that space. And our proposal here is to allocate ARPA funds to develop an indoor cold storage unit with a large capacity in an area of the building that could be serviced by a large delivery truck from Second Harvest very easily. So with this proposal, the city would actually be expanding the footprint of the community service center within the building. And Public Works has secured a $150,000 estimate for the project.
Hey, Councilmember Bonaventura.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Stephen, so can you tell me the, so with respect to the temporary refrigeration right now, what are we, what's the cost we were incurring for that if we kept going until things get better? Or, and then secondly, so are you saying that the new refrigeration unit had a cost of 150? That that's going to be a permanent refrigeration unit that we can use for, I don't know, however long it lasts?
So I'll start with your second question, that the indoor refrigeration unit would be one of the large rooms in the building that we currently use, the city uses. And it would be converted into an indoor refrigerator of sorts, and it's very large. It would be a permanent fixture in the building. And it's in a, it's in the perfect spot to be serviced by the large delivery truck. The current temporary storage unit, we, the city has provided the electrical hookup for that unit. I know we have public work staff on the line here that could maybe answer the question about how much that's costing. It's really about the fact that that's rented equipment that needs to be returned to the owner at some point soon. And there's the other aspect of that unit kind of taking up a large area of the parking lot. And the other tenants will be coming back. It's also just, it's not really a safe option right now, the way it's set up for long term.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Stephen and Councilmember Bonaventura. And so you're mentioning this is actually going to be a permanent place within the community service center to basically store food when they distribute on a weekly basis?
It is a weekly basis right now. It's actually four days a week. And what, what Second Harvest has told us in some initial meetings about planning for the future is that they are anticipating food need to remain high for quite a while after reopening. So, and we're talking years. So we think that it could be utilized for that for a really long time, even though it's permanent.
So with a permanent refrigeration unit, would it remain at four days a week? Or does it change any of the hours and timing time?
We do expect hours for food distribution to change as the tenants in the rest of the building come back to in-person services. So that's, that's not all finalized just yet. But we'll definitely keep the city council informed when we have new schedules for those food distributions.
Thank you very much, Stephen. I see Councilmember Dujibani.
Thank you, Mayor. Stephen, so just a, I'm sure you already saw it over there because you went over there to look at it. That, that, you're right. Where the temporary thing is, so for my colleagues, a couple of volunteers had asked me if they could even have a temporary ramp when they lift the food inside to the outside. As you saw, it's really not a ramp. They have to stand, you know, like you saw that walk up. You know, that's just a little area, like a step up to get, reach in to get the food. And then carrying the food out, there's like a step down, you know, like it's not even. And they were asking if there's any way, if you don't mind, to go look at that and see if, while this is going on, if they can have like a temporary type ramp that they, because they're lifting the bags and the food, and then they could lose their balance coming out of that temporary one. So they asked me to come over there and I looked at it. And so there's a gap. There's like a gap where they step down. So if you wouldn't mind looking into that and maybe having something temporary while this is going. Because I thank you for this because this is well needed. I mean, this is really, really needed. And, but you're right about the temporary ones. And right now, concern is that somebody could lose their balance over there. If you don't mind looking at that part, that'd be great. And also with this, with this monies, which are these two great important projects as well. You know how on the, I'm sure that this is off the top, in the same building, that the light is still on almost 24 hours a day. Remember that? We had a, it was a prod and the light still stays on. Are we able to fix that issue with any of this? I think it was in when they did the remodel and the light stays on all night.
Thank you, Councilmember. I can certainly bring that up with Public Works to take a look.
Okay. Because I tried to look in it before, remember? And they thought that they were trying to fix it, and it's still on. And the PG and E bills are going to be skyrocketing. But at the same time, this is a great idea. It's well needed, well thought out, and, and definitely. And we applaud all our volunteers for being over there helping. Thank you so much. Thank you, Abby. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks for the feedback. Okay, I think we're ready to move to the next slide.
So I'll go ahead and move to the next recommendation, and this is in a different eligibility category. This is within the water and sewer infrastructure kind of eligibility category, water infrastructure specifically. And the, the great thing for the federal regulations is they allow projects to be eligible that are already kind of eligible for other federal funding programs. And in this case, we have a great project that's a high priority for the city and is also eligible for federal funding under the Clean Water State Revolving Fund. So it makes it eligible for this category. So the Vista Grande Drainage Basin Improvement Project is eligible for ARPA funds. And because it's a critical project that will help reduce flooding and improve the Vista Grande Canal, improve the adjacent wetlands, improve the upstream drainage system, and the management of Lake Merced, we think this is a great project to apply some of our ARPA funds to. It will, although the project has a cost of 115 million approximately, and the city's obligation is about 55 million approximately, we're contributing a small amount, but it's an amount that will help offset some of the amounts of the ratepayers would pay towards the project. And so we're giving it some money from these funds as well as part of our recommendation.
Okay, so this is the final spending category. And it is for programs like food, rent, and utility assistance, eviction protection, small business grants, and projects to create healthy childhood environments. So I'm going to take you through four different recommendations here. And the first falls under the category of eviction protection. The city is proposing to provide funding to legal aid societies that is specifically designated for Daily City residents. And as, as we all know, the state of California extended the COVID-related eviction moratorium through the end of September this year. And both the state and federal government have already allocated significant levels of funding to pay for rent relief for 100% of back and future rent payments. San Mateo County has received $45 million to operate that rental assistance program countywide. And just to give you a statistic, Daily City currently has the highest number of applicants for rent relief, and it represents over 20% of all active applications right now. We've been pushing that program pretty hard in our outreach as well. And then just as another reminder, since the start of the pandemic, the city has allocated over $2 million of our own funds for direct rental assistance for Daily City residents, and that's operated through the community service center. So now, the city is proposing to augment rental assistance with legal support. When that eviction moratorium expires very soon.
Right, Stephen?
Stephen, you're on mute. This is still.
Oh, sorry. I don't know how that happened. So, um, so I was saying now we want to augment rental assistance with legal support. And when that moratorium, eviction moratorium expires, there's going to be tenants in our community who need legal support, who would not otherwise be able to access or pay for those legal services. Legal Aid Society of San Mateo County has a fantastic and longstanding reputation for protecting tenants. And with a contribution of $100,000, up to 200 households could access free legal support. And these are services like legal representation, workshops, individual consultations about eviction protections. And just so you know, Daily City already contributes $16,000 every year to Legal Aid Society for free services for our residents. So this would really dramatically expand the number of people they can help. Next, we're going to talk about two recommendations that pertain to small business assistance. And first, we would like to focus on restaurants. And we know that most of our local small businesses, we know that most of our local businesses are actually small businesses. And the restaurant industry represents the largest share of those businesses. And that industry was hit really hard during the pandemic. So the first recommendation is to allocate $330,000 as a follow-up to the county's Restaurant Brewery and Winery Grant Program. That was a program that provided up to $10,000 grants per eligible business. So the good news was that there were 23 restaurants in Daily City that received grants. But there were 33 applicants that were eligible but did not receive grants after the funding ran out. So we know that there's demonstrated need there for focused restaurant support. And second, and this is in the next highlighted box on the page, staff is recommending funding small business grants. There will be a sixth round of grants through the SMC Strong Fund. And this time, it's focused again on small businesses. The county has allocated $2 million for this latest round. And the city could provide an allocation to the SMC Strong Fund that would be specifically designated for Daily City businesses. We did this already in 2020 when we donated $75,000 to the fund. To date, Daily City businesses have received about $700,000 in targeted small business grants, and that was to 60 businesses in Daily City. This isn't including nonprofits or childcare. They were tracked in separate grant programs. And we know that there is still significant demand out there for help. The San Mateo County Economic Development Association, otherwise known as SAMCDA, has noted that every single business support program that was launched since the start of the pandemic has very quickly exhausted all of their funding. And all of those programs were unable to provide funding to everyone who applied. So there's leftover demand just from those previous rounds of grants. And finally, the fourth recommendation here is for $1 million for a childcare program in one of the city's qualifying low-income census tracts. This proposal is to add a new childcare site. And we closely work with Peninsula Family Service. That's an organization that already operates in Daily City. And they've actually been receiving CDBG funding from Daily City for over 20 years. About five years ago, they lost a 40-child center near Parkview Clubhouse. So in this proposal, we would allocate money to acquire and develop a new childcare facility suitable for 40 children. This potential new childcare center would serve infants and toddlers. Uh, this potential new childcare center would serve infants and toddlers. This is an area which has the greatest need for services and the smallest number of existing resources. So on the next slide, we will see, um, we can take a step back and look at all of the recommendations together in their list with their dollar totals. Um, since the council already adopted the revenue loss replacement in, uh. Our recent budget adoption, there's just over five million dollars to allocate among the various programs highlighted in yellow. And at this time, I would invite, um, any feedback or questions from the city council. So I'll turn this back over to the mayor before, um, we get to public comment.
Thank you, Steven, for that presentation and also for, um, uh, Mr. Azar for your presentation as well in regards to this. Uh, you know, uh, one question I do have is, um, I know that, um. I think studies have shown that the impact to, um, communities, most especially. Um, immigrant and communities of color have actually been the most impacted during COVID nineteen. And I, I see that, you know, the support for food is there because there's still food insecurity. And then also, um, reinforcing, um, our small business support, uh, which are, um. You know, which is extremely important. I think that's great that you have allocated, uh, that in that regard. But, you know, I think, um. I know this is a recommendation, um. Down the line, um, but I also think that maybe there's some room for us to see where we can, uh, provide more support, um. To, um. The community members and I, I, the legal aid support makes sense. We provided, uh, rental dollars in the past, uh, red cell assistance, which is wonderful. And childcare is huge. You know, that was a huge barrier for many, um, families and individuals. Uh, most especially also, it just highlighted it even more so during COVID. How, um, some, you know, it was, there was a real need, um, that when, when that hit, when COVID hit around childcare. Um, and it, it constantly is, even if we didn't have COVID. So I'm glad that that's, um, listed here today. Um, my question is around the Vista Grande Drainage Basin Program, project. I know it's a huge project of ours. Um, and I know that staff has worked diligently to look for. Federal dollars, state dollars. I mean, and this is just a small amount that we're giving to, uh, a very huge project. Um, but given the fact that, you know, we're looking at local recovery. Um, you know, for me, um, I'd like to see maybe if there's a way that we can allocate maybe the dollars from the Vista Granite Drainage Basin. Pot Basin Project to, um, you know, uh, more of the needs of com- community members. Um, that have been, uh, this, uh, proportionally kind of impacted during, um, COVID nineteen. So that's just my thoughts. I know it's, it's vague. I, I want to hear from, um, you know, of course, my colleagues and also from community members. At, at hand, but I think overall, this has been extremely thoughtful on so many levels. Around where we can, um, you know, direct dollars, especially towards our recovery. So thank you so much. And those are just, uh, some of my thoughts right now. I see a hand up from, uh, Councilmember Sylvester. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Mayor. Um. I, first of all, I apologize for coming in late. Um, I like to, uh, acknowledge staff and all the work you've done to, uh, come up with various recommendations. In reading, uh, um. The allocations and what is permissible. I see one area that has not been touched or mentioned. And I think it's very, very important. Um, I would like to see a minimum of one hundred thousand dollars for the following. We've all heard the term, the digital divide. And as such, uh, I also wanted to make mention that Daly City has been acknowledged as an age-friendly city. In addition, we have many disadvantaged students. I'm sure you've probably seen on the internet where they'll go to McDonald's or it was a Jack in the Box, just so that they can use the internet. And with the Cafe Program Age Friendly, we have come up with a proposal. That we provide broadband access. Along with television streaming. As a matter of fact, I donated a television for this project. At all of our community centers in Daly City to start. Uh, as you may well know, uh, the county, uh, through Supervisor Canapa, provided Wi-Fi access. At the War Memorial. But I think we need to go further. And putting Wi-Fi access, uh, broadband within all of our community centers. Would not only help towards the digital divide. But it would also, uh, it also comes within the purview of, uh, these funds as designated, uh, from the federal government. So I think that should become a priority, uh, and, uh, those are my comments at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. So, uh, for, for their clarification, um. Uh, there, on the slides, it mentioned that it's for small business recovery. Um, if we go back.
Oh, I, I think.
It said, uh, small businesses, uh, assistance to households and nonprofits. And so. Um, I know that, uh, a lot of the legwork in our communities are, um, a lot of grassroots organizations. That have actually, you know, worked, uh, towards helping those households in, you know, around language access. Around being able to maneuver through what Councilmember Sylvester said through technology, because they don't have access to technology or whatnot. And. So just wondering, I don't see any allocation towards any support to, uh, towards nonprofits that, um, may be able to assist our. Uh, individual households, may it be families, et cetera, um, on. On the budget. And so, um, I know this is not finalized. I just wanted to see if I missed anything.
Mayor, if it could, would you like me to respond with some info?
Yeah.
Okay, so regarding nonprofits, I, I just, I do want to share a little statistic that we learned, uh, from SAMCDA, who's been tracking. The amount of funding dispersed since the start of the pandemic through all the, the various grant programs and. Um, nonprofits in Daly City received, um, one hundred, uh, just over one hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in grants that helped ten different nonprofits. So far, um, but your point is taken and we can certainly, um, look at options. Um, and I did want to touch upon, um, I know originally you brought up immigrant communities, BIPOC communities, um. And I, I wanted to highlight another statistic for, um, if you remember, there was a round of immigrant relief, uh, grants. That operated countywide. Daly City had, I, I'm pretty sure it was the highest total. And there were two thousand four hundred and ninety-two individuals or families that. Received money through that program. And it was, um, almost two point five million dollars that was allocated. So I just wanted to give you background there. Um, and we can certainly look at that again. Um.
That, that, I mean, I think that's, that's wonderful here that our community members have been given access through the county or, um, state and federal funds. Uh, and we know it's not over, that this pandemic, um, is, it's all happening, but we're getting through it together and just. Wondering if there's any other opportunities to be able to ensure that, um, you know, the impacted communities. Uh, that we have in Daly City are, are able to have that continuity of resources as we move forward. So. Uh, that was it. I, I know we have an ongoing discussion, conversation, but I wanted to just make sure. Um, I didn't miss that. So thank you so much for, um, providing those statistics. You always have that at the tip of your hands and. Uh, appreciate the education from, for myself and also the community members that are listening in. Um, we know that we live in a diverse community, um, and there's a diversity of needs and, uh, language access. Boots on the ground, grassroots is key. So thank you so much. Uh, so I see Councilmember Benimtori, please.
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, Madam Mayor. Let me go, um, maybe go one slide over. Next one, next one, next one, next one. Uh, next one, that one, okay. So, uh, my, my question is, let me, let me start with the, um. The restaurant assistance grants to be funded to the, uh, unfunded applicants. When we contribute, the, let's say we contributed the three hundred and thirty thousand that you're recommending. So does that go into a pool and then that is then dispersed to where, um. Um, other non-Daly City, um, restaurants or breweries or wineries get, have an opportunity to get that money? Or is it? Pretty, it's pretty much guaranteed that the money that we put into that restaurant assistance will go directly to Daly City Restaurants?
Um, Councilmember, it is, uh, guaranteed that it would be designated for Daly City Restaurants only. There is a two million dollar pool of money currently allocated. Um, and, oh, I'm sorry, that, that's for the business grants, but. We, this would be solely for Daly City businesses, just like before when we donated the seventy-five thousand dollars that was specifically designated for our city.
Okay. And then also staying with that restaurant assistance. Um, I understand the, the logic of three hundred and thirty, because there was apparently thirty-three more restaurants that didn't get it. Is that, um, assistance closed or is it going to be opening up again? Do you know?
Um, at this time, I have not heard anything about a reopening of that grant program.
All right. So then I guess my same question for the small business grants. If we were to give the five hundred thousand, does that guarantee five hundred thousand going to Daly City businesses?
It, it does. Um, we, because it's through the S M C Strong Fund, we can designate it for Daly City businesses. This is actually the grant program that has two million allocated for this next round. Some of that money will go to Daly City businesses as well.
Okay. And then, um. When, when it came to the consideration of eviction, um, issues. Can you walk me through your, your thoughts on why, um, you didn't, uh, maybe recommend. Providing tenant assistance directly, uh, rather than ju- rather than giving legal aid tenant support?
Yeah, so. Uh, and tenant assistance, are you referring to rent relief specifically?
Yes.
There is such a high level of money that has been poured into rent relief right now. And we feel like that. Program is actually pretty well-funded right now. And we also have this looming deadline for the eviction moratorium. Um, to expire and we're, we know that evictions will, proceedings will spike after that time. And that people will really be in a crunch to find legal help. So. Even though there's programs that can pay one hundred percent of back and future rent. There still might be a spike in eviction. So that's why we wanted to really target legal support, because we know our annual contribution probably won't cover the amount. Of need in that area. Um. There is a separate portion of the American Rescue Plan Act that's dedicated to emergency rent relief. So that's actually outside of the state and local recovery funds we're talking about tonight.
So is that separate portion, uh, how is that going to filter through Daly City?
So, well, forty-five million has been allocated to the county of San Mateo to operate that rent relief program countywide. Um, and then we also have the Community Service Center, um, spending down that, you know, over two million, we provided them for rent relief as well. So. Um, I, I know so far that Daly City has the highest number of active applications for that countywide program. So we'll probably get the largest share of that forty-five million dollar allocation.
Got it. Okay. Um, let me go to the next slide. Yeah, this one. Okay, so I, I, um. I mean, I, I cannot disagree with what you're recommending and, um. I mean, because it all really made sense to me. But I want to disagree somewhat. And, um, what I want to disagree about is, is basically the same lines that Mayor Manalo. Was talking about, which is, um. This funding is the, the, the real intent of the funding was to. Um, provide some relief due to COVID, uh, related issues. And you have all made very good arguments as to why all of this. Um, is COVID related? And so I applaud you for all of that. Um, but I would like to see some movement and some change in the allocation of the funds. Um, because I, I would like to see it more directly benefit those, uh. Um, impacted the most. Uh, and again, so I, I, I say what I said in the beginning, that I understand the logic. And, and how you can relate it to COVID-like, um, general fund and the Vista Grand. But if I were to just rank in terms of priority of the immediate relief. Those two wouldn't be at the top of my list, nor would such a huge amount go to those two. I would like to see a, a recommendation that adjusts it downwardly. And upwardly to those other, um, categories you've identified. And maybe even add additional categories if you, uh, want to do more, um, analysis and. And thinking and, and maybe more input from the community. But again, I, I, as I said, I cannot disagree. I think it makes sense with what the staff has put together. You can justify it as it's, uh, graphed in this, uh. Uh, proposal, but I would like to see some deviation somewhat for, for those that are really needed the most. Um, and just to throw it out there, so, um. You know, I asked the question about. The, in terms of the, um, the general fund and the reserves. Um, I understand that it would be a, a good place to be at six months of reserves. But I know that historically we've operated on much less than that. And, um, I don't want to do anything crazy, but I, I just want to acknowledge and. Uh, give, uh, monies to the people that are impacted the most right now. And, um, you know, I, uh, so if there is movement that can be made in that respect. Um. Maybe we should take a look at those, uh, revenues as well. Uh, you know, this is a unique time in our history as a country, as a community. And, uh, people are hurting. And, um. I, I would much rather see and provide relief for them. In, 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 in a way that obviously is, is, uh, makes sense, that, that is, um, uh. Appropriate and that doesn't put our city in any kind of risk. Uh, or, or extraordinary risk, because there's always risk to something. Um. So that's my thoughts and thank you for all your input. Great job.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Sylv- uh, I mean, Councilmember Benimtori on those questions and highlights. Did you have, uh, something to say, Steven, in regards to that?
I was just going to say, um, that in terms of the Vista Grande project, just to add some thinking, um. To why this showed up here, we were really, um, thinking about utility bills for residents, because our water department is an enterprise department. It's run as a, a rate payer funded business. So, and we know that utility bill relief has featured prominently in, in other rent. Other relief programs. It's kind of combined with the rent relief program that's going on right now in California. So. That's why we put a contribution there. Um, we could certainly work with reducing that amount and reallocating it elsewhere. Um, but I just wanted you to know that. Um. And. In terms of the general fund, um, revenue loss replacement. The, the way we think about. the the way we think about our revenue losses that, you know, we showed some data that that indicated we would be at three point five months in reserves in fiscal year twenty two. And we we are anticipating ongoing revenue loss for two to three years after that. We luckily have not had to consider service cuts so far during the pandemic. And that's what we were trying to avoid because a lot of those services are what is left now since the Great Recession. You know, after that decade of of really, you know, staff and program loss. We we didn't want to lose anything further really because what's left is really the most vital.
Thank you, Stephen, for for that. I think, you know, historically, we've seen kind of where or just in the timeframe that I've been on on council where the gauge was about three months of reserves and that's what was always kind of put out there as numbers. And oh, we need to make sure we have three months, three months. And so, you know, I think it's it's great that we're looking at kind of more and and but I I think it's also we are at a time where you know, there's a lot of needs in our community and but you know, I I see that I see where there was a lot of time and effort on this and why I only pointed out Vista Grande Drainage was because of the fact that it's a huge project and I know that we need to garner more resources for it down the pipeline. And I understand from City Manager Malby that we do need to put in some of our own dollars. But given the fact that, you know, there are a lot of community members that need our support. And, you know, hopefully we'll we'll hear from them whether they write to us or we hear from them this evening. It's to actually look at kind of this is a conversation and see if there's allocation to those that have been impacted the most. You know, I I I understand, you know, about the Vista Grande Drainage and how important it is to our community and how we need resources in that. But as far as, you know, the COVID COVID nineteen, you know, impact our communities and families. I think that's where, you know, I'd like to see more allocation. And and that's why I brought up where where's the support towards nonprofits that reach those families? Where is also an opportunity, which is great here. I see the small business assistance. It's huge. I see that that it's actually thought about and how can we support the restaurants that didn't get, you know, the resources of first round. But then how about how about if we didn't reach all the restaurants that didn't know about the programs, right? That were at the county. And so there's all these these thoughts. My thought processes is how can we impact the most need in our community along the same lines as a council member Ben Ventura. And so I I think I see two hands raised and and this is for Ms. Malby, City Manager Malby in regards to the Vista Grande Drainage Basin Project. If we were to, you know, reallocate the funding, some of the funding from that line item is will there be anything, you know, immediately that will cause kind of some sort of issue?
Um, no, not necessarily. Technically, we're going out right now to our stakeholders to ask for participation, monetary contribution to this huge and important project. But if the council were to quit, you know, decide to change that, modify it and put it somewhere else, we should be okay. But why my hand was really up was just to provide context with regard to the revenue losses. And I don't mean to belabor this because I completely understand the council's wishes to put as much money as possible back into our community. And I believe that staff shares that sentiment, which is why we are not asking for council to put all of the money that we're receiving back into our general fund. But we we I believe and I think Abby and Stephen can maybe provide some surrounding survey information about what other cities are doing. But we're actually in almost a unique situation where we have five million dollars remaining for the council to distribute however they wish, obviously thankfully considering staff recommendations. But Abby or Stephen, if you want to talk at all about what surrounding cities are doing with regard to revenue losses and replacement, so that we're not, you know, we're not just sort of making this up for a lack of better way of explaining it.
I know Abby's looked into this, so I'll kick it over to her.
So again, there's actually a lot of cities have it finalized all their recommendations. But several cities, well, San Mateo is one right now who's taken their recommendation to the council. They have less than us in terms of allocation. It's about nineteen million dollars. But at the moment, they've decided to try to allocate all of it to supporting the revenue losses, given the the large amount of decrease in revenues. Other local jurisdictions like South San Francisco, they also have a smaller allocation than we do. So they're putting about four million of their funding, it's about twelve million, into revenue losses. So they have a significant portion that is going to different different categories besides revenue loss. A lot of cities are actually taking advantage of the capital improvement project opportunity with revenue loss. And so they're doing things like the capital improvements like we've recommended. So there's several cities who are getting much smaller allocations and that's often just going to high priority capital improvement projects that are from their general fund. So just kind of based on our our conversations with folks, they're prioritizing the general fund revenue losses, but they are also prioritizing the contributions to the community and trying to balance the two.
Thank you very much, Ms. Malby and Ms. Vezzer and for for that and for that information. And Council Member DG, Vani.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to make mine very short so that people have a chance to talk because the time is getting short. I see here a great job staff with the legal aid support for eviction protection. And given the fact, I know that, for instance, that many, many apartments are now vacant, people have been pushed out even before this is even ending. And we do not have any just cause evictions in our Daly City currently that we might consider putting more in that particular area. It's been really hard and for the people in our different communities of diversity. Having spoken with them or either through different nonprofits like Faith in Action or directly to them, this is very much of a struggle. And the restaurants, I'm gonna leave my conversation and then I would like to see what we can do with the Childcare Early Learning Project because I realize that that's forty nine spots. But I know that childcare really needs to be looked at in a holistic, in a larger area. But I know that this is one time funding and we're trying to do the best we can with it. So I appreciate that fact. So thank you, Mayor, and I'll keep it short because we need to get to the people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this point, we will now hear from the community members that have joined us for our town hall this evening. And so members of the public who wish to comment may click the raise hand feature to raise your hand to speak. And for those joining by phone, press asterix nine to raise your hand and then asterix six to unmute.
We have Leilani Ramos who will be helping facilitate public comment tonight.
Okay, wonderful. Ms. Ramos?
For those members of the public who wish to make comments, please use the raise hand feature to raise your hand to speak. Please note, staff will announce the name of the last person whose hand was raised upon calling for public comment and that person will be the last verbal comment. If additional speakers queue up after the last called speaker, the mayor may continue to allow public comment if time allows. Otherwise, public comment may be emailed to cityclerk@dailycity.org. When you hear a name called, staff will send your request to unmute your microphone and you may begin speaking. Each person will receive a maximum of two minutes to speak and may only speak once. When your two minutes have been reached, we ask that you wrap up your comments. Speakers not in compliance with the council's rules of decorum will be muted. Currently, I see two hands raised. The last called speaker is Mario Santa Cruz and we'll begin with Rob Chua.
Hello, Madam Mayor, Council, can you hear me? Just double checking the sound here. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you to Madam Mayor, of course, you and and to the esteemed staff and and council for for having us today to kind of talk about this issue and amazing opportunity, obviously, for for all Daly City and for all of us that serve Daly City and and the myriad ways that 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 we do. I I kind of came on here because it was such a big opportunity and also to kind of echo some of the comments being made by the mayor and Councilmember Ben Ventura regarding the work of community-based organizations and especially trying to earmark some of those funds to to get to the CBOs. You know, a lot of the work in thinking about the work of CBOs globally kind of echoes all the work that you do all at the council level and staff level. We all work to get, you know, the services and the resources to into the hands of all the respective people and demographics that we serve at in Daly City and PBRC, Filipino-Bayanihan Resource Center, for which the organization that I represent today, all are, you know, have been exhausted, as I'm sure you all are, with, you know, the the new types of works that we all have to do to to respond to the call of history. And so, you know, I think most of you all have either participated or have heard about the work that we've done at PBRC with the food distribution drives. Most recently, we partnered with the North with Northeast Medical Services to provide targeted, you know, culturally competent outreach to the Filipino community and getting the resources and also access to vaccines to community members, you know, in in their language and, you know, with phone calls every week. And, you know, there still is a gulf in vaccination rates in Daly City with, you know, with respect to the rest of the county. And so, you know, as we work to kind of, you know, resolve these issues together, I am just, you know, respectfully asking that some of this money gets allocated to a community-based organization. So thank you very much and I'll end it there.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Mario Santa Cruz.
Hello, 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 can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hi. My name is Mario Santa Cruz. I'm a Daly City resident and also business owner. Also, I'm a planning commissioner for San Mateo County. And my I'm going to start the presentation by commending City Council Ray Juan Ventura because in reality, he he really exactly touched the topic on my presentation, which is what's the real intent of this program? The real intent of this program doesn't say American Capital Improvement Plan because there is infrastructure going on in the Congress that it will be money coming in for all the cities. It's to help us, small business owners. And I'm telling you, it's a shame that Daly City has not been proactive and help and helpful to all city small small businesses like San Francisco, San Jose and Oakland. You guys have been very dormant about helping people. And I what I can see here out of the twenty five million dollars being designated, almost forty five percent are designated for capital improvement. What kind of help is this going to be for a small business that was struggling with fifty percent less in income? And so we're talking about giving us only thirty percent. How many businesses, how many small businesses have been giving money already? How many small businesses in Daly City have not had the opportunity to have the money? How are we going to be doing the criteria of distributing money between a small business and medium-sized businesses? How about touching about reduction of expenditure and being more efficient in government spending rather than allocating twenty million for general fund just because we're short? Like you guys are short, we, a small business, are short and suffering. And the money should be distributed to all these people who are actually suffering in this city. It's embarrassing that Daly City has not been so proactive as San Francisco, San Jose and Oakland. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That concludes public comment.
Thank you. There's no other hands raised, Leilani?
No other hands raised, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. I want to thank the speakers that joined us this evening in regards to your comments to the local recovery plan. We will definitely take your comments as we decide in allocating these funds. It's important to hear from community members on the ground. And this is why we're having this town hall this evening. If there are any others that were not able to join, please send in any written comments to us because this this evening is it's it's not the the final decision. So thank you very much for your time. And at this point, we will move on to what the next steps are. But I am definitely in hearing both speakers in regards to your experience and and your voice on this matter. As we know that, you know, we're we're here for the community. We're here to be able to see what we can do to assist and support residents, small businesses and community members in Daly City. So in regards to next steps, will will staff be able to share? Well, the next steps are here in front of us. So city staff will incorporate FEED Act from the City Council and Community Local Recovery Plan presented to City Council in twenty twenty one. So nothing is final yet. We will be seeing the local recovery plan that will be presented in September of twenty twenty one. And then the city staff will fully bring the fully planned ARPA projects to the City Council during the expenditure term. And so what that means is there is still more time to hear from community members. You know, I think I'm hearing from, you know, I'd like to hear from my colleagues as well. I I heard from some of them this evening in regards to kind of where there needs to be a shift in allocation of dollars in supporting, you know, our small businesses and those that are most affected by COVID nineteen. And, you know, I mentioned it earlier in my comments that, you know, it has been statistically mentioned that those that have been most impacted are immigrant communities, people of color, women, small businesses. I mean, and so if we can ensure that it's a reflection to be able to support those most in need, I think is is very important in that regard. So thank you. Thank you very much. I think that, you know, for those that joined us this evening, you know, there's still time to send in your feedback. And like we said, we'd love to hear from everyone and we appreciate the staff's hard work. Each and every one of you putting this presentation together. And we know that we'll be working together to finalize it in September. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I think we move on to a new Zoom for the next one. So we'll have to end this meeting and rejoin via a new link.
Wonderful work, everyone. Thank you.